One of the things you want to look at in a costing facility, and this is a big determination, is your day room inmates versus your individual cells for inmates. That is a consideration that does come into play with costing, costing facilities.
Are you looking at our facility?
Yes ma'am.
Would you think that we would need to build a new facility? Or are you thinking like in addition? I know you have probably dug into it or anything, but I'm thinking we might have to get new land or something that you appear to have.
I know it's a consideration, if correctly called all, please, that the county is either looking at perhaps in addition to the existing facility or a new facility. Am I fairly accurate in that, what I said? Yes, I'm sure you're right. It needs a pretty serious redevelopment.
One of the things, one of the comments I gave you is that the real cost is not the bricks and mortar, it's the staffing. So, to me, that's one of the things that we need looking at is sometimes when you do an addition, you save money today, but you end up doing another pot here and his staffing doubles, and so you end up costing yourself ten years as opposed to really having saved money. Even though we've looked at it, that kind of now is haven't been done yet.
And that's the type of thing we can do at these assessment, and feel just that type of question in this assessment. But, I mean, Sheriff knows staffing is a challenge, and just as Jim alluded to, you've got to ask somebody in that chair at 24 seven. And that's where your cost comes in, is staffing in facilities.
And a facility lasts three years, is that what you said typically?
Four lifecycle.
For that study, that snapshot, they assumed a third year lifecycle. As you probably can look across the state, jail buildings are used a lot longer than thirty years, but that's what they use to produce that snapshot, that financial snapshot.
My question, would it be possible, and you may not know that without spending it, but would it be possible to go up?
I think the answer is no. Generally, we don't recommend designing buildings to go vertical. I could take you to a building right now over in West Tennessee where they designed it twenty years to go up, it brought us to it and say, hey, can we go up with this now? Structural codes have changed. In most cases, building codes change every five or ten years, and it becomes very difficult a lot of times to take a building that was designed to a code fifty, twenty years ago and then design it to go up, because at that point, it's got to be current codes, and that gets to be very expensive.
So you're saying that, that probably there's no way of using our existing buildings?
No, if you want to use it, you can use it, you just, I'm just saying that you want to be aware of some of these issues that you need to take a look at, that in some cases you can be pinning wise and patting foolish with staffing. I'm not saying you would be here, I'm just saying that's something to look at. I would think, and I'm trying to think of my twenty or thirty years, where we have used existing buildings, we have never gone up, and we've probably done seven or eight total facilities, probably ten or fifteen expansions, they've always gone lateral, and you may have the room and the ability to do that, I don't know that.
Are you landlocked, right now, to existing, you want to landlock?
How much land have you got?
A lot.
An acre, acre, about right. Does that max, half acre, ten acre?
No, we've got more than that too. I don't know exactly how much it is. We've got room for expansion. You can't go up with the building you've got, but it's not structurally designed for you.
Yeah, I'd be surprised, I wouldn't think you did.
You've got a property line close in the back, a creek on one side, hospital on the other side, in odd shape, block.
And the building's what, twenty or thirty years old already?
Nine two.
So it's possible thirty years old.
Now, Jim has not toured the jail.
I've been over there, and I've been in the lobby, but I've not been all through it. But if it's like most jails, thirty year, thirty year old jails I've been in, if you say, you've got to somehow use this, well, that can be done, but if you're looking over a twenty, thirty year lifecycle, I'm guessing if you had enough land to get beside it where you can really start a phase replacement, or go out and do something new, your grandson, when he's the county mayor, is probably going to be happier than you try to band-aid what you've got. Probably don't want to hear that, but I suspect that's a practical comment.
Well, if you kept it a pie shape and to cut down on staffing, if you, if you added on to it, I don't honestly think that would work either.
You may not have enough land. Now, if you had enough land where you could add a complete pie and be efficient in your staffing and move all your inmates into it, and then just use the existing building for, say, storage and offices and other things, if that would work? But again, I-
Would that be possible, maybe you could use that for a judicial building and build a jail inside of there or joining it?
If you had land.
How many acres Jim wants for, like those two counties that you live, the one hundred bed facility, how many acres?
If you said to me, for a hundred bed facility, and we're just going to go out and get a piece of land, I would say probably three acres minimum, five acres would be desirable, because then you'd have some, the one hundred bed is a half pie, and it's in Walnut Ridge, it's set up in the future where you can edit by pie slices to go up to two hundred beds, so, so they're not backed into a corner.
You had asked ma'am about, about pie slices. Theoretically, theoretically, we could build a pie as big, as big as you want. In the design process, what we can do is address your need right now with the sheriff's challenge in this missing facility, and build to handle his needs right now, with the foresight to look at additional pie slices as the county grows or as the sheriff's need runs on that. So, we've spoken of expansion, we've got many, many jails, we have done exactly like that, whether it's an octagon, or whether it's a square, or whether it's a rectangle, and we have pie slices, quite often, let us leave slices out, and it's just open. Quite often, they'll use it up for a rec yard for the inmates, until at some point in time, they will fill in another slice of the pie, add another fifty, sixty, seventy inmates.
It's tricky, it's complicated.
I know this is going to take account of raw white, but really, what's the range as far a foot each?
Well, I know when I was, Jim agrees with my number. Three, three seventy-five?
That's why I picked the same stuff from year to year.
Do me a favor, don't take that number. Take a square foot, and apply it, and you told me three hundred seventy-five square foot.
Okay.
For, for budgetary, for a general idea, yes, you can use, you can use that number. The two jails Jim alluded to, about eighty thousand dollars per bed is about what those two come up with. So, between those two numbers, you can get a feel, for lack of a better term.
Remember, that's a this minute.
Yes, sir. Yeah, when I talk of two, two or three years-
It's a November, because what happens is, is this process goes on for six months or a year, and you're talking to people, and then two years down the road, you start the design process, and you remember what you're, just keep in mind, that's today, this minute. Those buildings were built a year or so ago, so.
A good illustration of that, still to, still is, yeah, as before in some order to start, to think about tonight and come up.
So, what is the time period of how long do you make it, like from six to nine to getting the jail?
The, the construction process is going to be eighteen to twenty, twenty four months, the construction process. I'm going to let Jim lab rate, there's a law for two that, there's the process of the, of the drawings, process of financing, process of approval, so I'm going to let Jim-
If you had the money and said, go, you're probably talking six to eight months to wait for design, eighteen, twenty four months to build, so you're probably good two to three years out from this minute, if, if you're put. Now, the positives of that is TCI, if they know you're moving, that you have a POA, a plan of action in place, and you're moving on it, they'll work with you, but you're two, three years out probably. I somehow feel like we're bringing back-
Do you have a name for contact, Jim, in Prince County?
Gosh, that's been so long, I can get you a name, please. Those people have retired, because we did that design, it was like-
We make a few one of those.
Ten years ago. Now, at the back of that book, there's a bunch of references.
Oh, a bunch of references, Mississippi.
No, no. Are you from Prince County?
No, sir, I'm from the college.
Okay. The former sheriff, I know he's retired, but like, I can get you his name, and I don't know about the commissioners, if any of them are still there. Now, that facility was not built, that was designed, not built. It actually got bid, got bid into money, but they, they didn't build it.
There are a lot of these.
Lot of places that, Lake County, first time I presented there in Tennessee, they said to me, Jim, before you stand up to present, I want you to know we're the poorest county in Tennessee.
Now, we've got-
Well, that's true, not, but they said that-
We've got counties with seven, eight, nine thousand people that are building jails.
Okay, y'all got other things to do.
We appreciate the opportunity, Sheriff, thanks for being here.
Thank y'all. Next, I don't know, but then for ten, in rail, and for the factory program, whether it's in rail with Mike, Dean says that he is going to, who is best to be here this year, is that right? Number eleven, moving on to number eleven, energy efficient school initiative, and for last, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brady, who's here, our director of school.
James Shannon, Mr. Board, wish you, wish you'd be here tonight to represent Cannon County Schools. We started the process probably over a year and a half ago in regard to energy efficient schools, and I was at a conference, and the Director Slasher was there, and as well as train representatives were there, and got my attention about saving money on our, on our schools, doing the energy efficient schools, using that initiative, of that low-cost money from the state of Tennessee. So, we started the process, and I sent you an email order here today describing the process and what the school board has done so far in doing that for, for our students. And I'm going to let Mr. Randy Holden and Mr. Lord Editor for Train, and then Scott Slasher is here, and they'll give you a, a good overview of what they found, and we've done preliminary of tour of the schools that we did, the board approved an investment-grade audit at the November eighth meeting, and they have been conducting that audit from that point on, and for the last spring, have been looking at audit, and they partner with another organization called Excel Energy, Mr. Mark Gregory, who is doing the lighting portion of the energy efficient grant. So, each of you received this a month and a half ago. Also, as part of the process, Randy, and Owen, and Scott met with County Executive Bush, we've been on two separate occasions, and everybody seems excited about the project, our board is excited about the project, as well as Executive Bush, and I'm going to turn it over to them, because they tell you a whole lot more answers than I can on this project.
Thank you, Director, I appreciate that. With us also knows Owen Navaller, he is one of our leaders with Train, he's based out of Knoxville, Tennessee, and he's, he's my manager, so I'm going to try doing my best job tonight in front of my manager that I can, but he's going to be a land tranque that you can too, as you have. If you need a copy of this, I brought two extras, I know Director Curtis said he'd send this out to you electronically, so if you do need it, we have it. And we didn't know tonight if you wanted to just make this a conversation, since you had this information, or if you would like to see a presentation, we're prepared if you want it. But basically, what this program does, it gives new controls, new equipment, new technologies, and improvements to your school buildings, it doesn't cost you anything than what you're already paying, plus, it saves you drastic amount of energy dollars, and it does this without it costing your taxpayers, and what we have done is we've gone through your schools, and we have found where we can save money through what you're currently spending to the utility companies. Take that fraction of that, that dollar that's going to the utility company, a certain percentage of that comes out, that can go back into improvements in your schools. Train engineers have looked at the schools already, we've come up with a dollar amount that we can say is a rough guarantee right now. So, if we say you can come into your schools, and we can save a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, and if we fall short of that, we write a check for the difference. If you go over that, you keep everything. So, it's the ultimate win-win, no-lose scenario for your schools, which are your largest investment in the county, all backed by an eighteen billion dollar company in Train. We do that annually, if, like I said, we fall short, you get a check, you go over, you keep it. We press the restart button and start again. Okay? What we've done is going through your schools, we've found things that we can improve upon, things like lighting, can standardize the lighting of your classroom. When you look at your classrooms now, you see, and some of your other buildings, you see different color lights, you see different shades of lights, you see some light fixtures that have four lights in them, some light fixtures have two. What we're going to do with your lighting is, on the interior lighting, standardize that where at the reading level, the United States Department of Education says the optimal level of light, we're going to do that for your classrooms. That's the optimal level for learning and comprehension, from the United States Department of, from the United States Department of Education. So, we standardize there. We're not in the business to make your classrooms uncomfortable. Remember, we're trained, we have a reputation of comfort and of air quality. So, what we do is we look at some improvements in your buildings also of that. We look at the exterior of the building, we see a lot of that in here, what we've already looked at, and come up with the improvements for your schools, to go through with our train engineers. So, what we have done is, we get a feasibility study to find out, yes, there is an opportunity here with Cannon County Schools. Then what we've done is, with the board's approval, we've gone through with preliminary audit of the schools. Right now, that has cost the schools absolutely nothing, for the train engineers to go through and find these items for improvements. We're talking building controls, train, we don't make lights, of course, when you think of train, you're thinking of HPA City. We don't, there's a lot of things that we're going to put into your schools and improve upon, and some of the heartburn issues that are causing the maintenance staff a lot of problems, we're going to begin a lot of those addressed in your schools for you. Okay? And do you have any questions?
For wood grade grammar school, that thermal heat and cooling system?
Geo thermal.
So, anything different with that, especially with wells going out in?
So, we've included, at this preliminary stage, we've included a complete recommissioning of that system. We need to dig in deeper to figure out what kind of contingency you have left in that borefield. We'll be able to do some testing during the investment grade audit to figure out whether that geo thermal field will make it on its own, or whether it's going to need some help, you know, with some additional wells or cooling tower, you know, supplementing like cooling towers, et cetera. But we, at this stage of the game, we've included a complete recommissioning of wood grade grammar, and a whole bunch of work at the high school.
So, you really don't know if you're going to use it yet or not, or replace it?
I, I would say that unless we see active, unless we see an active situation where we're concerned about the wellfield in general, we will probably reuse it or reuse a portion of it.
Currently, you're figuring that, is this two point one four three million does not call the replacement system, right?
Correct, at this point.
So, any cost that would be incurred on that would be on the account?
Right. Well, so, think about it this way. What we're going to do is, we're going to go do a level of evaluation, hence the name investment grade audit, that's going to deliver contract grade cost estimates, contract grade savings, contract grade engineering. What we've done to date is what's called an actual level two audit, and that is basically we've put in auditors and engineers on the ground, they've done walkthroughs, they've done spreadsheet-type calculations, but until we do a much more significant level of audit, we can't tell you exactly what this program is going to look like. We feel very confident that it will fall fairly close to the numbers we've projected. Based on what we know, we don't anticipate coming back to you saying, you know, you need to invest five million dollars here, or this is not going to work. The school's running now, and so, the worst-case scenario, if you go through the investment grade audit, we could identify that, yeah, maybe there is an investment needed, this is what we can do in the meantime to help buy some time, but it's, it's not like all of a sudden you're going to be, listen, you've got to spend five million dollars over in the county. Does that make sense?
Well, I understand exactly what you're saying, but it still boils back down to two point one million, does not include any cost associated with that system being replaced.
That is correct.
Therefore, if there are costs in, in work, Commissioner, we're interested from is, there's a common sense concerns at the moment with what's going on over there, with wells failing in the rock, quarry down the road, a few less than a mile, I guess, give or take. If, if that has some impact on it, which, to prove that to be a story, anyway, with all that being said, it, it's, it's not moving in the right direction, I guess, from a common sense standpoint. So, whatever evolves on that, if there's additional cost, that would be back in the account of twenty-two point one, just not including anything from a cost outlay of that system.
Correct. And you brought up something earlier tonight too, about working with the state of Tennessee to provide grants. What we do is, we're an extra set of eyes and ears working with the schools, we're, we're looking for eye grants that may come out any time. With us tonight, Scott Slasher from the state of Tennessee, Energy Efficiency Schools Initiative, and he can, we do, we partner with them, because they're a funding vehicle for the schools as well. This is a program right now that he can talk a little bit more about, benefiting other school systems that we work with, that are here in middle Tennessee, and we're doing a very good job with them. Please, Scott.
Well, thank you very much, Randy. Fisher, good evening, my name is Scott Slasher, I'm with the state of Tennessee, the Energy Efficient Schools Initiative, and if you're not aware of us, we've been around for about ten years, and we were founded back in two thousand and eight, and really, the initiative is really, how do we provide energy efficiency in schools, help them reduce cost, and improve the classroom learning environment? And so, what we basically bring to the table is the technical assistance, their engineers will look at a project, our engineers will look at a project, if our engineers agree with Train's engineers that the project is viable, our council will go ahead and fund that project. So, our, our funding is one to three million, is at one and a half percent over sixteen years, or we can go up to a max of five million dollars on the project. So, that's, we're really here for the school districts and for the counties. Grants, I would love to say we had grants, you guys actually did participate in a grant program back in two thousand and nine, and I went back and looked at the number this morning, we provided about seventy thousand dollars to Cannon County Schools through a grant. I think part of it at one time was something with the geo thermal, I have to go back to all the notes, but I think we tried to recommission it, or there was some issue then, that was either two thousand and nine, two thousand and twelve.
Always been the issues.
So, that, that came up tonight, I did look, but we, we had provided some grant funding for that, to really go investigate that, that information there. But really, for tonight, this project, one of the things that, you know, I present with Train, we're ESI, it's with the independent third-party evaluator for the county commission and for the school district. It is our, our loan dollars that are going out the door, we want to make sure that they're protected. We don't want to just give money, throw money at a bad project, where we're going to lose money. So far, after ten years, we've never had one default on a loan, and a hundred percent of the money that was given, because we were given ninety million dollars out of state lottery funds back in two thousand and eight. Last year, the General Assembly allowed us to have eleven million more to put into the school districts right now across the state. And so, if you guys are here tonight and choose to move forward with this project, I encourage you to do that, and consider ESI as funding it, it's just a third set of eyes for you guys.
How did this thing go through? You guys come for free yearly to do an audit, say, one of the schools is not meeting the criteria, we all come back and do that, do that type of audit, or is that a yearly thing you'll do?
Yeah, so, so, part of the whole process is a measurement and verification process, and so, with this program, the schools will get access to a full-time energy engineer and energy manager. And so, we're going to consistently be looking at the utility spend, we do site inspections and not, we don't just wait for the year, we don't like surprises, and you don't either. And so, typically, they'll do quarterly inspections, they'll do more if they see something that doesn't look right, you know? And, and the whole idea is, is if, like, if the school's maintenance guys are missing something, or if something's failing and, and they didn't catch it, you know, we start to see that in the utility bills, and so, we're basically your partner in that event. The, and just think about it this way, we're financially on the hook, and so, at the end of the year, we don't want a surprise, you know, my boss doesn't want a surprise that we have to write a shortfall check, and you don't want a surprise, and so, yeah, we're on it like a rug. And incidentally, just, so, some people get a little confused on how the money works, and so, I'm going to try to do this real clean. You all, the county, will borrow the funds on behalf of the schools from the state. It's a very simple loan document, I've seen a lot of them, okay? It's very, very low-cost money. You'll have a resolution between the county and the schools, that the schools has the debt service on that note, they're going to repay that loan by the savings that occurs in their utility budget. And we will have a guarantee in place between Train and the schools. So, if those savings don't materialize, we are writing a check to the schools for the difference, and that occurs on an annual basis, for as long as you want to keep that in place. Typically, the way the contract is written, that guarantee would stay in place for the length of term of the law.
So, I think there's one question, and if you do this energy audit, or the utility company?
We do.
We do energy audit, because I thought utility companies do that anyway.
And you request them to do the energy audit, they'll come in and do it. Yeah, well, they would do it if you want. Yeah, except they won't go implement over and guarantee the results.
That's why I was concerned.
So, and, and just to speak to that, so there's different levels, level one, level two, level three, what they, so, TBA or your local power company may go ahead and do a level one, they've gone into a level two, which is a little bit more, then we get to the level three, which is the investment grade, utilities aren't going to be doing the investment grade audit.
It's strange that the state gives doors to a private company, and it just doesn't seem right to me.
So, again, just to clarify, we are vendor neutral and equipment neutral, I go and present to county commissions, they ask me to come, they present a project, and actually, Freddie reached out to me, we actually met in class, I think, two years ago, and that's really where it comes up, from there. We're, we're the financing, financing portion of this, and that's what we're here to do, is provide the funding for you.
Yeah, tomorrow, he's going to be at another county commission with another ESCO.
Okay, I mean, I'm all about saving money, that's good, you know, Freddie, did you get quotes from those companies?
I have talked to PCG and other, other companies, but we developed a great relationship with, with Train, and I did talk with, and on top of that, Snyder's another one that we looked at, but these guys have had more and more references of school systems surrounding us that I knew, and I appreciated those references from places like Butler County and Coffin County, who are part of the, you know, of Butler County, the criminals, and other director with me as well, and then again, also with, with Coffin County, with, with Mr. Don Plainer, who does, who is director there, she was recently back there in Toronto, and I talked with them, and they were, they looked around, next to Train, was the leader of the companies that they had moved down. So, yes, the answer right there is, yes, we have. I will tell you one thing too, as part of, as part of this, we got to thinking there, in fact, Owen mentioned it to us, this year, well, probably a month ago, he said that regarding our roofs, and our roofs will be bit out, this guy emailed- Uh, I just got an email from our architect and they will be bid out in January. So, we looked at the insulation. Now, they couldn't roll, the state would not allow us to roll the roofs in there with that. But they will allow us to roll the insulation that we just.